All right, we can call to order a select board meeting for May 1st, 2019. Thank you, everybody, for coming. First thing we are going to do tonight is the consent agenda. Don't have any minutes to approve tonight. We have a few warrants, API or AP 1941, AP 1941-2, AP 1942-S, AP 1942, and AP 1943. We have a one-day liquor license I will have to abstain from, Valley Malt, June 14th, 21st, 29th, and July 5th on the Town Commons. One-day liquor license I also have to abstain from Friends of the Goodwin Beer Tasting, May 24th, 2019, the Goodwin Library. Last warrant of fiscal year 2019, July 19th, 2019. A Chapter 90 request for various roads throughout town. And Scott McCarthy, appointment to DPW as Field Superintendent.
Can I take out the DPW appointment?
Sure.
And does anybody have a list of the roads that are being done?
I think it's in your attachment here.
I didn't see it.
Just before we move on, can somebody just, can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you.
And second for discussion.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Question about the roads throughout town. Chris, do you have that?
Looks like page four.
Chapter 90 request.
Page four of the Chapter 90 request. So it looks like hot mix asphalt on Roosevelt Street, Rocky Hill Road, miscellaneous repairs, 20 percent rubber chip seal, Mountain Warner Road, and Mountain Warner Road. And it looks like there's a map that shows the, on page six.
And what was the total amount for the Chapter 90 money that were being, that's being used?
Almost $200,000, $198,000. But there should be, once the state gets their stuff together, another $150,000, right? Or something along those lines. As well, the Moody Bridge Road, $80,000 plus some more. But we're just waiting on that to get put together.
I'd just like people to know what's in the pocket.
$198,603.
Thank you.
Okay, so we were going to pull out appointment to DPW as Field Superintendent. All in favor of everything else?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, standing for the two.
Except for Chapter 90.
Thank you. And David, would you like to present Scott?
I'll actually turn it over to Chris. Chris, do you want to introduce Scott and tell us a little bit about him and why he's a good fit for the town?
Thank you, Mr. John.
Thank you.
Mr. John, I'd like to introduce a new hire, Lieutenant Scott McCarthy.
Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you. He's coming to the department with a very wide knowledge of public works projects, war act sewer and road construction. Currently, he works with deep construction. He has worked with East Hampton and also DAF under us capacities. And so we had, we were privileged to have you couple of individuals who experiences, including some who were there before my job. I didn't know that. But he kind of have the fit of what we're looking for. It's a very high-profile job. And it's also, it's not the job of, on the job training job. It requires someone who comes in and right away begin to, in my view, get himself more relevant to our structure. And based on references and also questions, he sounds to be somebody who is ready to go. And he's also a way of the six months probation.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a, Cory check was done, and this is for a non-union spot, correct?
Yes, non-union spot. We did a Cory check also with the pre-employment requirements.
Great. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the hiring of Scott McCarthy.
Second?
All those in favor? Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Hope stay. Welcome aboard, Scott.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Put a face to you around town. You're now on camera.
Okay, so we will move on to public comments. We were going to revise the public comment rules to limit your comments to three minutes so that other members of the audience will have a chance to speak. Do we need to vote on that? May I have a motion? Would you?
I'll make a motion to limit the public comments to three minutes per person per meeting.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Yeah, and at any time, anybody can write a letter to this board with their comments or questions or complaints. So, I mean, we're just trying to make the meetings as short, as sweet as possible. We are still open to all the comments, complaints, and that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we can open up the public comment period.
I just have one quick question right now about the roads. Do you know here if Golden Court and Berkway are Hadley roads?
I don't know.
No, they're state.
Okay.
We've heard conflicts now.
My understanding is that they're not town roads.
I thought they were attempting to fix, and then they were there one day. I think it was the town Hadley by Prince Word, working on the holes, like they were chipping their way through. And I thought they'd surely be back to film. They never came, and Berkway is dangerous.
Well, I will.
Totally dangerous.
I'll get with Chris, and we can verify that. And for the next meeting, we'll find that out for you, okay?
Do you want contact information so you can get back there?
Yes, if you would leave that with Jennifer or David.
What? Your contact information?
Unless you just want.
So they can reach you.
Unless you just want me to talk about it at the next meeting.
Call me already, Golden Court.
You'll get it, okay.
I'm sure you know that's where I'm from.
All right. Go ahead.
But I'm not the beast that you all think I am. Anyway, I came before the Hadley Select Board on March 20th asking for a Human Rights Commission. And I understand from calling Jennifer at the town, you know, here in David Nixon's office, that Civility and Inclusion Group is forming instead of a Human Rights Commission. Well, I looked up the word civility in the dictionary, and it says courtesy, politeness, good manners, gentlemanlike, gracious, state of being a good citizen. And the word originates all the way back to the 1350s. But right now in our country, hate crimes are at an all-time high. Violent attacks against Jews and Muslims have doubled in 2018. And the town of Hadley has an enormous problem with racism and bigotry. So a call for civility, to me, feels like an effort to stifle people's, the injustices that have taken place, and the acts of racism and bigotry and hate that we've experienced living at Golden Court and throughout the town. Sometimes I feel that civility is about making sure that the status quo in a town, the people who are in the hierarchy of the town, stay the same, pretty much. And I looked up the definition of status quo. It's to keep things the way they are now, no change, current situation and an existing state of affairs. The status quo is the reason that Golden Court Housing Board members are elected and re-elected in Hadley Town elections over and over and over, often uncontested, even though we have informed the town administrator, the Select Board, the newspapers, anyone that will listen, that many of our Golden Court Hadley Housing Authority Board members are overt racist and bigots and have been physically, verbally, and emotionally abusive to tenants for years. Their reign continues, and this is why I asked two weeks ago for the Hadley Housing Association Board members be removed from office or at least investigated to be removed. So think again about using this word civility. Let the people who will be members of this group come up with their own name. And I also was considering the fact that maybe having a board member on this group might be conflict of interest. I'm not sure, but I think that's something that has to be discussed among a group that forms. So I wanted to know a little bit more about this group. Who's going to be on it? Who decides who's on it? And I did hear that one of the board members is going to be on it. So I'm not saying that I'm against them being on it, but it might be conflict of interest. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'll just say real quick that, you know, we want to ensure equal rights to all with this formation of this committee. And, you know, it will work to try to provide trainings, look at ways to be more diverse and inclusive, but it can't really be like an investigatory body. So we can't go after certain complaints. So it is meant to be more diverse and inclusive. It is not formed yet. It would have to be approved by this board. A charter would have to come up. People would have to meet and come together with some goals. So that's going to be in the future, after town meeting, but thank you.
And we, as a board, haven't discussed the mission and the charter.
Yeah, we have not.
And all committees come under the purview of the Select Board.
They do, yeah.
And they are put in place by the Select Board.
Exactly.
Can I, one comment?
I wonder if we're in the right place. That's what I'd like to know. Should we be here or should we be somewhere else?
Well, can I just make a comment as far as removing the Housing Authority members?
Yeah, this is to do with what Sue's talking about. Are we talking to the right people?
Let me finish. They are elected individuals, so the only way to remove them is by recalling them or electing somebody else when their term is over. We can't, as a board, remove them from office.
Oh, we do that?
So if you want to go that route, then there's steps you can take to do that. Otherwise, asking for them to be removed isn't going to help.
I'm not asking to have you remove them. I'm asking you to investigate the removal and tell us about the process. Because this isn't the first time the tenants at Golden Court have come. I've lived there for 15 years, and many of us have come, telling everybody that I listed on that list, from Department of Housing Authority to people who work at Town Hall, what we've gone through. Two politicians, and nobody wants to listen. And we're tired of it. We're about, you know, we want to know what are, what we can do to finally get this underway. And I'm not asking for a question.
Can you explain the recall to them?
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
No, no, but I'm going to say it's that information you can provide.
Down the road, we want some answers and not just to go away and come back again and not give answers.
No, I'd say make a comment to David and sit down and talk about what the process is and what your options are. Because just coming to us, there's not much we can do.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes.
That's, we spoke with your secretary, those that are interested in being on this new.
Yeah, and we took your names down, and we have that on record.
Where does it go from there?
It's got to come back to the Select Board because they haven't talked collectively about what the charter is, how many, what's the composition, what are the deliverable results. None of that has been decided by the Select Board, so they need to talk about that.
Well, can anyone that calls in and has an interest, are they going to be included or is it?
We have, we have not discussed it as a board yet, so we have to decide all of that, the process around the formation of the committee.
I mean, you can understand.
No, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I understand, but.
Do you understand why we would be frustrated?
I do understand, but your public comment period's over. We have an agenda we have to stick to, but thank you.
Now, should we be taking the town meeting instead of coming here is what I want to know.
I don't think there's anything town meeting can do.
The state actually runs that project.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do.
They do not in any of that sort of, you're entirely wrong about that.
Okay, we're starting to have a lot of discussion on a comment period.
Okay, yeah, we're good, yeah, we're good. So thank you very much. Is there anyone else here tonight for public comments?
I also live in Golden Court. And did I understand you to say that we have to wait until the next election and to vote them out? Or is there another way to get rid of the board? What I'm saying is I wonder if you people realize that the way that they speak to us and treat us, they use profanity, they use racism, it's completely unacceptable from anything, from any board in any town, not just Hadley. And it's just, I too have lived there for 14 years, and not much has changed. We got rid of the former executive director to be replaced by this board with another one that's nasty, rude, doesn't follow the.
So I think we're getting into personalities and not issues. We have to be, we have to be careful.
I would, I would say your best path forward is to schedule a meeting with David for a half hour, talk to him what your options are, and see what's possible. And that's, that's the best we can do right now. And I'm sorry, but that's the best we can do right now.
Our representative's going to be here soon, and you could maybe talk to him and find out what's going on with the Director of the Housing Board. I mean, they.
She's referring to Dan Carey?
Yeah, he has office.
We've spoken with him already.
Okay, you have, he has office hours at the Council on Aging once a month. Oh, it's here, I'm sorry, it's here in town.
It's here and at Council on Aging.
Okay, both, yeah.
I think they got two, two days.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Just want to know how I can move forward with all the complaints on the traffic speed on Rocky Hill Road. I don't know what this is the time, but we've called numerous times Hadley Police. Nothing's been done. They sit for 15 minutes in the traffic, and UMass is just, I live up on the upper end, and it is 60-plus miles an hour, and it's 30. Wrote letters to Select, complaining, nothing. And I'm getting phone calls from everybody from Rocky Hill Road. How do they get mine? I guess I'm going to went to jail and slow down, they know me. But even I talked to Dennis, he says going 40, he's getting passed on double line.
Oh, yeah.
School bus is getting passed. My neighbor here called me, just trying to make the turn off of Rocky Hill into the driveway. You're taking your life in your hands because it's a blind corner, there are arborvitus growing there. And they come down the road, you look, and they just, they're doing, I followed a girl doing 65 miles an hour. She got down, and I was speeding. I did, just to see how fast the car would go. And I was driving instructor at that point. And it's ridiculous. I'm sitting in the house, and you can hear trailer trucks going through, cement trucks, and there are kids on bicycles there. It's one of these days, someone's going to get killed on that road.
Yeah.
I will speak with the chief on that, and I will get back to you with his answers.
Just want to know, I mean, how many letters do I have to write? How many phone calls?
I know I have.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, chief of police, you just can look, they give you every excuse. Don't have enough, tomorrow's more important. You guys aren't important. They just tell you, we don't, we don't care.
I don't believe that that's what Chief Mason has said.
I've been told every excuse in the book.
I will, I will, I will talk with him.
Every excuse. We don't have enough people called, we don't have enough.
I will, I will talk with them.
And I said, I go to work for City of Northampton.
What is your name, sir?
We don't have that, we have plenty of speed.
What is your name?
I'll be told, it's 114.
I will get back to you.
What I'm trying to say is, it's got to be, you know, we got to solve this problem. Speed bump signs.
I live on Bay Road, have the same problem.
But they sit at 6:30 in the morning when I go to work.
I can't get out of my driveway on Bay Road at 6:30 in the morning.
6:30, why do you have radar set at 6:30 every morning?
I have the same problem.
I look at him, I shake my head, well, where are you at 3:30 when the kids are out of school? Running around, you're stopping a guy going to work at 6:30 in the morning? You know what I'm saying?
Get your walk.
Can I ask, could I ask if we can schedule a, after town meeting, this week anyway, can we schedule a session with the chief and ask him to bring in the traffic enforcement officer? Rocky Hill's bad, Bay Road, we've.
Yeah, I've gotten the same complaints on West Street, you know, all over, so.
There's several areas.
We can schedule that, would be great.
That would be good, yeah.
If he's got a gremlin or something, I don't know why he can't direct some of that.
I'll chat with him.
Yeah, well, we, after, after town meeting, we'll have a meeting. Maybe the DPW Director can come as well, and we can look at what we can do for road studies, you know, to then, I don't know what we can do to change the speed limit, put in speed bumps. I don't know, but we can, we can research it at this meeting and talk about it. That's the best we can do. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, can move on here to, Hadley, well, let's do Memorial Day Parade. Basically, just the Hadley Legion inviting us to participate in this year's annual Memorial Day Parade on Sunday, May 26th at 2:00 PM. There's a host of visits to cemeteries, starting at 11:15 AM at the Russellville Cemetery. And then the parade starts at 2:00 PM, which is from East Street to the West Street Common.
There will also be, all elected officials are invited to participate in the parade. So if everybody would like to participate, going to the cemeteries, we usually meet at 10:30 at the Legion.
Yes, 10:30.
To board the buses to go to the cemetery.
Can't wait for that bus ride this year.
I love the bus ride.
It's great. Is everybody going to make it this year or, John will be there?
Yeah, no, I thought it was the weekend of the race for the town.
Okay. I'm planning on being there.
I'll let you know.
Okay, David's going to let us know.
You know what's no, Dave?
Because Uncle Sam calls.
Okay. I don't know, we don't require any vote there, do we?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
No, but there's going to be, there's going to be a different set lineup because Lieutenant Cook has been working with the Legion and Gene Baxter.
Yes.
People to set up a good portion of East Street is where the parade route's going to be. They'll have on one side of the street so that one side remains open, that the others will be on the other side of the street to move forward. So all the floats, all those things will be on East Street to come around onto Route 9.
Yeah, so instead of staging at the senior center.
Correct.
Field, this year will be staging in East Street. Yep.
And they're going to go to the Common.
So the Common.
And everyone is invited back afterwards to the Legion to participate in refreshments also.
Moving on, just the Select Board Liaison System. The current liaison system is as follows. General Government and Library Building Committee is Molly Keegan. Public Safety and Municipal Building Committee, as well as Fire Substation Building Committee is Joyce.
I've been a miss because I didn't know I was the municipal building. You've been going.
I go to that occasionally, yeah.
I will put that on my agenda to go.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Education and Senior Center Building Committee and, oh, Capital Improvement Plan or Committee is myself.
May not have to go to the municipal one now, that would be a free thing.
One less thing. Public Works is David Phil. And Human Services and Culture and Recreation is John Waskevitz. I don't know if we want to make any changes, those are the current ones.
I think it was veterans, too.
Yeah, I think your veterans, too.
Veterans, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the list for another, another year, adding the veterans for John.
Okay.
Second that.
I'll second for discussion only, if does anybody want to change? I'm fine, stay in the course.
I think because we have these projects in place right now that we're working on.
Everybody's involved in it anyways.
I think we should, and we're all communicating.
Yeah. And if you need me to fill in on Municipal Building Committee, I always can, so.
I just would like to know when they meet. I know it's on Monday, Monday or Tuesdays.
Tuesdays, yeah.
And Tim usually sends the agenda.
Yeah.
I think ahead of time, yeah.
All right.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Pioneer Valley New England Mountain Bike, you're here, okay, great. We didn't have a time. So Pioneer Valley New England Mountain Bike Association is seeking permission from the town of Hadley as a co-owner of the conservation restriction of Hampshire College property to provide basic trail maintenance on Earl's Trails. This would include pruning overgrowth, removing down trees, restoring proper outslope to trails to ensure they drain without causing erosion problems, minor rerouting trail sections to avoid badly eroded sections, building bridges over sensitive wetlands, and work on remediation efforts for the previously eroded trail conditions as possible. Yeah, would you like to say anything about it?
Sure. I'd just like to know where, if you could, while we're on camera, tell people where these trails are.
Oh, yeah, the, well, I can say they're, these trails would be across from Hampshire College near the Hadley Reservoir.
Are they within, are they within the Hadley Reservoir? So that we would have a problem with people parking there because they do get ticketed if they're not Hadley residents.
Yeah, yeah. But if you are a Hadley resident, you can purchase a sticker for that parking area.
So I noticed they park at the end of Shamara rather than by the reservoir typically and get on the trails there and go through.
For biking?
Yeah.
Is that been okay up in Shamara? Have you?
I mean, I had any complaints. They look at you funny when you walk out there to go hunting.
You have a moving target?
Tough eating.
Paul, are you here for that as well? The bike?
Yeah, just keep it, just in case any questions came up.
Okay.
Excuse me, there's a Black Ford pickup truck with its lights on in the parking lot, if that longs any of y'all?
It'll be okay for a little bit. Look at it, it'll be less scary. Might be able to get you a jumpstart.
Yeah.
So I'm Jonathan Mottler. I've been the president of Pioneer Valley NIMBA for the last two or so years. And we've been contacting a lot of the landowners in the area and the land managers just to kind of get a lot of the trails to be on an official status with maintenance. Earl's Trails in particular has multiple landowners. Primarily, we work with DCR on a lot of our properties, but with Earl's, we do have, you know, two schools, DCR, and you guys. So we've been slowly working around trying to get in contact with each owner to discuss maintaining them. Earl's has blown up in the last five years in popularity, along with biking. I'm not sure what has blown up, but we've had a lot of individuals who have created the trails, who, you know, worked at Hampshire, who have moved on, or who were just part of the initial hiking system or dog walking system that are no longer around to maintain it. But the usage has steadily increased. So what we're looking to do is, you know, give our membership the opportunity to pitch in and help out on these trails. So we're not looking to build new trails. What we're trying to do is get everything that we do have out there, rideable, maintainable, sustainable, and kind of restore it, as it's definitely seen its use and is drawing a lot of people to it.
And what is DCR? Now, we're going into an agreement with you on that property out there.
What's that?
We're going into an agreement with, right, DCR, with the property in that area? Is that where the area is?
Yes.
Conservation restrictions.
Conservation restrictions, yes.
We're talking.
We're cash flow.
Yeah, cash flow, yeah.
Some of what the land we're talking about by the reservoir is, had these trails on it. And that would be, at least in my mind, one of the protected uses of that area. So I don't think that anybody has an issue with mountain bikes because I think it's perfect use for the.
I think the only issue that came up, and I think Paul might have been at the meeting, and there was somebody from DCR here, there was a big conversation about, well, actually it was the whole snowmobile.
Yeah.
But about signage, and the mountain bike trails came up specifically as an area where I think there have been some people who have complained that all these mountain bikers came flying at me, and they had no right to be on this trail.
Right.
And it was actually a mountain bike trail, but that, we're going to try to see if we could improve the markings of these trails?
So we would 100% love to do that. It's kind of been our biggest thing, just for safety issues and navigating the trails, you know, people going out and, you know, somebody gets hurt.
Because you guys go out and ride with your, with those bikes in the wintertime. You've got snow bikes. You know, I know that because one of my docs has them. But, yeah, and. Kill himself.
Yeah, and, um, we would love to sign the trails. Uh, signing the trails does require, um, a lot of work with the landowners and, you know, all of them agreeing that, you know, we want people to be told, hey, this trail ends up on our property, which.
DCR had offered to coordinate that, so I'm assuming.
Yeah, we've been working with DCR.
You have, okay.
So this, this actually all stemmed from a project with DCR, um, on one of their pieces of property right next to Amherst College at Earl's Trails. And, um, me and Paul Jay had discussed this, um, section, and he said, hey, you know, what you should really do with this is let's get all the other landowners or managers on board for this, and then we can really do this right. Um, so we did discuss, you know, signing and then rerouting stuff that needs to be rerouted, rebuilding it, and, uh, getting established. But we, um, we've been discussing with Hampshire College, um, trying to put a kiosk at Shamara Road, actually. They have a little piece of property that runs up to the end of that road, so we'd be on their property. And we ideally like to put up a trail map, um, trail etiquette, which includes, you know, how to handle, there's, you know, horses out there, there's hikers, just how to handle all the different user types, when to ride the trails, you know, if it's too wet, don't ride them, stuff like that. And, uh, that's kind of like a long-term project, but that is definitely something we'd like to do. So, yeah, we'd be totally okay with that.
So can I make a motion to grant Pioneer Valley member permission to, um, maintain and improve the existing trails and add signage as they, or trail markings, I should say, as they see fit? But just with the understanding that if any trails are add, and new trails are added, you would come back to the, to the board?
Sure, certainly. And, you know, if there's ever anything that does pop up out there that you have a question about, feel free to contact me. And I, I did include, and this is a piece of property, does any of y'all, there's a,
a map?
Yep, there's a map, and there's kind of a contract form that we normally do. It's, I don't know which, it's, we have different things for different landowners, so that's up to y'all. If it's, if this is verbal works, that's fine, and we can also discuss it. But my contact info is on there, so if you ever do have any problems with mountain bikers or people complaining for any reason, certainly give me a ring or.
You got a picture of a bridge here. Um, is that an old snowmobile bridge? And how are you gonna affect a snowmobile trail?
Uh, which bridge?
It was a bridge provided to us by conservation from Janice Stone, the one that you're placing.
Oh, oh, so you got the conservation. So that one will not be on a snowmobile trail. So that is on a, uh, a single track trail that runs at the bottom on Hampshire College. So that, uh, so the current crossing that we're, um, looking to fix is a dip down that is not sledable. Uh, it'd be fun to get stuck in, but it wouldn't be sledable. Um, and this particular bridge, it won't be, uh, wide enough for, it'll be a 32-inch bridge up there. Uh, it'll line up to 42, I don't think that's why it's not for sled track. But, uh, this, this particular section won't affect any, uh, trail sled mass or otherwise.
I'll second that motion.
Paul had a question back there.
Oh, I just, I was just gonna respond to John's comment, so that's, that's on the Hampshire College property, and I don't think they have a snowmobile trail on that property.
Oh, by the old speed toll?
Uh, well, below that, it's down.
Oh, yeah, it's at the very bottom.
So it's down on a field side. The water main goes through.
It's, uh, I don't know about the water main, but it's, it's kind of right, not far behind the little pond there for their facilities buildings, and it's just right back there. So it's pretty low. Pretty sure that's not a snowmobile.
Running right along Bay Road in the back.
No, it goes straight off the Shore Road down towards Bay Road. There used to be an old hay field there, and the water main crosses over the Bay Road through there also, so we've got another use of it down through there.
That, that, that trail is, that, that current bridge, and there's like a, it's like a pallet bridge.
Yeah, so it's been replaced, uh, probably seven times the last four years. So we've put something a little, little stir in there.
The other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, I'm pretty aware of, of New England Mountain Bike Association, it's a very professional group, and, you know, wherever they work, they, they're the experts on trail maintenance, especially for mountain bike trails. Um, and it's, I think it's a, a great thing that they're willing to offer their volunteer expertise and, and volunteer time to, to maintain trails for you.
Sounds good.
Yeah, uh, my only other comment would be just make, run everything by, uh, Conservation Commission, just to make sure they're good with all that, yeah.
Yeah, I, me and Janice worked with this for the last few months, and we have, we've done lots of property walks and discussions, and.
Okay.
Super excited, easy to talk to, so we'll definitely be in contact with Janice on anything that's, uh, relevant or even maybe relevant.
Okay. Sounds good. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.
Good to go. Be safe out there.
Happy trails.
You've been waiting to say that.
I will sing it though.
Jennifer, the Hadley Mothers Club proclamation, we're gonna wait for that for tomorrow, or do we want to state that tonight?
Y'all can read it tonight if you'd like, but then they're gonna, they're expecting it to be presented to them tomorrow, so.
Okay. I'll just say, right now, the Select Board congratulates the Hadley Mothers Club on 75 years of service to the Town of Hadley. We'll have a better, more detailed proclamation tomorrow night, so. Okay. Uh, sewer and water rates. Stroke for it, I don't know if you'd like to, uh, take the stage.
Can I just make a comment on this too? All in well that we're discussing the water rates, but we really haven't posted this as a public meeting yet.
That's what we're trying to do tonight, is find out your appetite, whether it's supposed to, whether we're going to post a meeting.
I thought that you weren't gonna try and have us vote on this tonight. We're gonna vote on doing a public meeting, correct?
That's correct.
If we're going in that direction.
If you're gonna go that direction, we need, we need your leadership on that one.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
I just wanted to be sure. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what we, the issue of sewer rates and water rates, um, we had a study done a few years ago, and the town had done, approved the study. Uh, we also applied our study, uh, the first year. Uh, we, so far, we have not been able to continue, and, uh, we brought this matter before the board a few months ago, and, uh, because of events at that time, the board decided to, I won't call it table it, we decided to, we felt that we'll come back to the board at this time. Um, we're not asking that the board should take a vote, but we are asking that if the board can allow us to take our suggestions, and the board can also take a vote to set up a public hearing concerning rates. If you look at a couple of charts we submitted to the board, if, for some reason, we decide, the board decided we should do nothing, um, at the end of this fiscal year, the sewer is already, everything is already declining in terms of, uh, the capital and the funds. And, uh, we, sewer will be in rate, and currently, we have, as a utility, we have a lot of work we have to do, capital projects, and, uh, we don't have the funding. Um, we, just even simple maintenance of these sewer mains and all these sewer pipes, who, that requires a couple of major funding. Um, we also have the plant, which, uh, at any time, events can happen because of the intake. We don't control what comes in. And at any time we get to know, especially our various pubs, we also have issues. And anytime issues come up, it's usually a, it's, it takes, everything is emergency when it comes to utility, and so at that time, we don't want to run to the board, and it's sometimes usually too expensive at that time. So we hope the board to take a look at, um, the, if we can continue with this 15%, which was recommended by outside experts who did the study, or the board can also tell us what to do. But we understand that, yes, the board has to set up a meeting, a public hearing for this rate. An issue of sewer, we also have, uh, requesting the board to also take a look at our septic fees. Um, I brought the, I brought the chief sewer project to, just in case, uh, of history, he may be able to add more to that. Well, currently, Mr. Chairman, our sewer and septic is, has been over 10 years, and they're not raised.
It hasn't been raised in 12, 12 years.
So, and, uh, we compare to surrounding towns.
So when you're talking about sewer and septic, are you talking about people putting in new septic systems?
Or septic?
The septic, they were pumped, yes.
Septic, oh, okay, so when it's pumped, and usually it is bring to, brought to our.
Right, this is from people's homes who are not on the sewer system.
Right.
They, they do their maintenance every three years roughly, pump it, hang out, and they bring it to us.
Okay. So you're saying that, like, Knessy or Winesick will pump somebody's septic system, and then they will bring it to you?
Yes.
Correct.
And that's for Hadley residents only, because we stop taking for outside residents?
Okay.
And so the, we are also requesting that the board should take a look at, um, increasing the fees per gallon.
So what is the fee, uh, I know what a homeowner gets because I have mine pumped. So what do you charge?
Do you want me to help you?
Sure.
Right, right now, a, a homeowner gets his tank pumped out, normally about 1,500 gallon tank, and they, um, pay to us $185 for 1,500 gallon tank. And that's roughly between, averages out about 13 cents a gallon. We'd like to go up to about 18 cents a gallon, and it would make the, it'd be like an $85 difference to, just to get a pump, just to get a little bit more. And our disposal costs have gone up too, because our sludge is now trucked to Lowell. Before, it went to Montague, it was closer, and it was much less money. But now going to Lowell, we're paying, we're probably paying 10 cents ourself to get, to move what we, we have, you know, the septic generates more sludge. So, so our window of making money has gone down too.
So we haven't raised the septic rates in 12 years?
I believe it's about 12 years.
And then how about those, didn't we just raise the sewer and water rates a year ago?
We did, five? Five?
Five for one and 15 for the other, wasn't it?
Yeah, five and 15.
Five for the water.
Five for water and 15 percent. Can I ask, um, a topic for discussion came up at the last meeting when we were talking about sewer. And, and this is a, um, this would be a major structural change, really. Right now, only the sewer users pay for this sewer system. Um, and we had a conversation about, you know, economies of scale, unless we're expanding the sewer system, which would come at a huge cost if we did so, but unless you have more businesses and individuals to spread this cost over, you have a relatively small number of people and businesses in town who are bearing the brunt of this. So one of the talking points that folks came up with, who weren't happy about these increases is, given the fact that Route Nine provides benefit to all of the residents of Hadley by effectively keeping everybody else's property taxes down because of the commercial strip, could an argument, should an argument be made that we look at handling the sewer costs differently? Um, I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just asking, Chris, if you have had any conversation about that with anybody, or have you even thought about it? Should we be thinking about it?
Oh, yes. I, the board can, the board as, uh, the sewer commissioners can propose that. Uh, in part, and I, I think it's in part because the economic effect of Route Nine covers everyone who has both sewer, sewer or septic. Also, there are, there are areas the board might look at, as you said, it's gonna be expensive, uh, especially at the issues upfront, is if the board can also encourage septic owners, especially when it's failing to tie in if they are in a street where we have sewer. And also, if we want to encourage, but I would require big borrowing, wherever we can expand the sewer and encourage homeowners to tie in with a, uh, abandonment program. Now, with a five, 10-year period, uh, the, the volume will be more than just only Route Nine. And that's, so that many municipalities, this is the process they're using, the abandonment pro, and program, so that homeowners will be, or, um, businesses will be inclined to tie.
So just for discussion purposes, uh, I, I think that expanding the number of users on existing streets where people aren't tied in is relatively cheap compared to tying in new streets.
Yes.
So I think there's a possibility, giving them some sort of incentive to tie into the system and become a customer. Also, the, the Route Nine issue, if there was a way to break out, like, I guess, the capital costs of sewer along Route Nine, or the infrastructure costs, from the rest of the system, I'd be okay with that. What I wouldn't be okay with would be funding the entire system through taxation, because unless you're gonna come and maintain my septic system for me, I don't feel that's a very fair, fair deal, so.
Yeah, but you're getting a benefit out of the.
Well, that's why I said.
Lower taxes as a resident.
Right, but if we can break out.
Because of the commercial area.
Right, if we can break out Route Nine, but I don't, there's no.
So would it be almost like the same thing, a split sewer rate for businesses and homeowners compared to, we don't have a split tax rate for our regular taxes?
We're talking about a split tax rate?
No, I'm looking at split sewer rates?
No.
No, I thought that's where you were going.
It would be where the funding source.
It's a question of whether or not the infrastructure goes over taxation, so that everybody, because the theory, David's making, and this is the argument, so David's making one practical argument that it's all, so I have a septic system, right, and I have to pay, and you do too, you have to pay the cost of maintaining it if a leach field fails and pumping it year over year. So one argument from septic users would be that, hey, we already are paying, you know, what we need to pay to take care of our business. The taxation argument says, well, your property taxes would probably be a lot higher if it weren't for the existence of Route Nine, and since Route Nine is the major user of the sewer infrastructure.
That was a statement, I mean, originally.
So, so those are the two arguments. Again, not advocating, just explaining.
I mean, when it was built in 64, you know, everything was great up until now, and we have infrastructure failures, you know, just like on the water side. And when, when we have that capital improvement, which I consider capital improvement, whether it be on a water or on a sewer, it should come out of taxation, you know? The, the main lines of the water and the wastewater, and all the pump stations throughout the whole town, wherever the service goes right now. And it, it is affecting everybody in the town, so, on the tax rate side of it.
Chris, can we break out, as far as data goes, how much water usage goes to those customers on Route Nine, and how much, you know, associated sewer billing goes to those customers versus the rest of the town?
It's gotta be total. We, we, we're down a quarterly billing now.
If the board permits me, I'll, I'll put together a study from, with our consultants to, and present to the board so that everyone can see that.
Do you want to do that before we do a public hearing?
We're gonna need that information.
Need that information first?
Yes.
Would, that would be presented at the public hearing? That information is, is that good enough for you guys?
What, what do you want to do?
Yeah, yeah.
How much time does it take? Sorry.
The, the sooner that we can get to a public hearing, the better, because you've, you've got a six-month delay in between reading and the issuance of the bill.
And we just got our water bills now.
So if you look at the long-term trend analysis for water and sewer, which are in your board docs, you'll see that water is in relatively good shape with respect to operations. But if you go to slide six of that, uh, long trend, uh, long-range trend analysis, you'll see that you're, you're underpowered in debt. You should have at least 20% of your revenue in water going to debt service, and you're at more like 11%, 10%, which means that we're building up an obligation that we're gonna have to pay in the future, uh, because we're not maintaining the system at the, at the level that we need. That's for water, so that's the reason why it's important to look at the water rates, even though operationally it looks good. Now, we have to be thinking about how do we position ourselves for, uh, the future.
And we should also have a plan for the capital component of it, and I don't think it's gonna be an easy conversation, so it seems like the sooner we get that convers, so I agree with you, I mean, I think we need to have the hearing, but I also would like to have Chris pursue that.
Okay.
Study on the capital side sooner rather than later.
So just, just to fill out the picture, if you look at the long-term, long-range trend analysis for sewer, every single indicator that are, that is in there shows that you've got an enterprise fund which is in trouble.
Right.
Um, and we need to do some sort of action, at least on sewer, just for operational, let alone the future capital costs that we have.
Yeah.
This has been a trickle-down effect for the last 15 or 20 years anyway. We went ahead and metered the town, then we went ahead and did water conservation. So that, everybody that was paying flat rate at one time was probably paying double what they're paying right now with the meters. So over the period of time, it's gradually gone down.
The usage.
The usage.
The usage.
At one point in time, I can remember, probably, what was it, I bet it's 40 years ago, we, there was supposed to be a plan in action about sewer-ing the whole town, right?
Yeah.
And that kind of went by the wayside. Now, Hackfield has sewered most of their town, even on outlying roads as Depot and areas of that nature. Now, I believe they did get a grant for that, correct?
I'm not quite sure. I, I know in Hadley, we should, we should move into like Meadowbrook area, where.
Where all the streets are.
Where there's a house. Where there's a house. You, you lay very little pipe, but you gain all these users at a very short distance.
Right.
That, that's the place to go. And if you're gonna do construction like that, you put new construction like on a tax rate, and the maintenance kinda, you know, just build it on the tax rate, but then afterwards, we, we maintain it on the sewer users, because you can't put all that new, that new cost into so few users to put it-
So, here's the question, if we do move forward to putting in all these other people onto the sewer line, will our pumping station be able to maintain all of that, handle it?
Yes, that's-
It will.
We've got plenty of capacity.
The pumping-
I'm talking about what's down here.
The pumping-
The treatment center will be able to handle it.
The pumping stations can handle it, but the plant can't.
We should be, we should be able to handle everything that's there right now.
Everything where?
Like, say, you did like Woodland and in front of like-
With the existing plant, with the trouble we're having now?
You don't, you don't gain that much water from houses, that's, and not everybody uses it at the same moment.
Well, and wouldn't that be part of, if, if you moved forward with the study, wouldn't those questions be answered, right? Dennis, you'd have a chance to participate in that and-
But that would be an area to really move into, whereas, whereas houses one after the other.
Okay, so, can I have a motion regarding the hearing?
I make a motion that we schedule a hearing on water and sewer rates to be held later in May.
I don't know how many days notice we need.
Yeah, how many?
Either May eighth or May fifteenth.
Doesn't he need the study though first before-
You need a study first.
Well, no, I think, I think what David was saying is-
I think we wanna look at rates.
We kinda can't delay on the other one, because by the time the study gets done, so that would be the second motion would be to authorize him to do the study.
We don't have three meetings in May.
You've got the May eighth and May fifteenth.
So, we have what, tonight, and then again next week, and again the one after that? Three weeks in a row?
Well, it's up to you, it's the pleasure of the board.
I didn't think we had three meetings month of May. So, I would think it would be the third Wednesday of the month that we would have it.
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Well, let's get, how about the fifteenth, we say right now?
Oh, I'm making the motion. Make a motion, schedule the public hearing on water and sewer rates for May fifteenth.
Second.
Any further discussion on the hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then, we are also discussing a study?
Yeah, the board authorized me to do the study.
Do we, do we wanna, wanna motion on that study?
Make a motion that we authorize Chris to move forward with a-
How old are these numbers from Time Bond?
Two, two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yes, twenty seventeen. They are, they are good numbers.
Remember, they came in with their presentation?
Yeah.
I'll second for discussion, but how, how much is the study gonna cost?
I don't have any number.
Any idea?
Depending on, on the depth of the study, we're talking about anywhere from seven to ten thousand dollars, because we also will be looking at our plans, the current, yes.
What do we want the goal of this study to be?
For the board, if the board has to make a decision in terms of, as we're discussing, especially with the, with Route Nine, correct?
Well, I'd like to know what it would be if we included the areas up off of Meadowbrook and that area.
And any other areas you may identify.
Return on investment numbers.
Huntington Road, off of Huntington, and which coincides with Mount Warner also, around that area.
And then also look at what it would, you know, if we ran to, yeah, two different cost structures, one with it all in sewer and one with it on taxation for the, just the infrastructure improvement.
And Chris, if you could break out the data for Route Nine customers as far as water and sewer usage versus residential customers in the rest of the town.
And do we wanna see if there's any grants out there?
Yeah.
Sure.
Always that. So, so the motion is to pursue this study with the goal of sewer expansion and looking at the Route Nine usage versus the rest of town?
Just a study, John.
Just the study?
The study.
Anything else?
And various funding scenarios.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Chris?
Yes.
Just look at it, it's all we can do.
Yeah.
And see what the capacity of our present
Yeah.
Treatment center can do.
You know, there was a lot of other options that I've been bringing up throughout this whole process, you know? Amherst really is a regional plant, and on a state, on a state level, if they were to do something with the Amherst treatment plant, it's not that far for our industrial area, our Station Two, which we had taxed once before, to tie that into Amherst, and then we'd have plenty of capac-
Down at Applebee's?
Yeah, then we'd have plenty of capac-, no, Mill Valley Road.
Mill Valley.
Because if you went straight down Mill Valley Road, you'd be able to tie into the Amherst line, you'd be able to pump to them. And, you know, it's per gallon, and then you would be underneath their restrictions, you know, whatever they charge a gallon to treat the waste, but that would free up a lot of space in our treatment plant. And as we talk every week about regionalization, I think this is a good area to look in.
Do we have any money in the budget for this study right now, in near twenty?
They would take it out of water and sewer reserves, wouldn't they?
I'm just on my clock.
I'm looking at you.
So, make the enterprise fund even more broke? Yeah, 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 yeah.
Exactly. Well, sure, take it out of zero dollars.
Zero to zero.
Yeah.
Maybe we might make some money, who knows? Can't make money without money.
I think Chris and I are gonna get in touch with Time Bond and we'll come back with some sort of quote.
Yeah.
And if we can afford it within the budget, we'll-
And funding, if there's any funding out there.
I mean, grant money's gonna take years too, now.
So, so do we wanna have our motion be for getting a quote on this study, so then we can vote on whether to do the study based on the cost and the funding source, or?
I think that delays things even more.
How about the motion is to approve it if we can afford it in our current budget?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I'll let you amend your-
Yeah, no, amended, but he said, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got one question. You're gonna wanna know how much water those businesses are using, is Route Nine, is that what your goal is?
Well, mostly sewer is the, the goal, but I guess if you could present the water-
'Cause they read the water meters on all the businesses, it seems like we could make up a list of-
Right.
And look it up and say, well, these businesses use X amount of gallons, and they've got so much sewage, it seems like we might have the information in-house.
Already.
I would think, I would think you would.
I would think you guys could put that together.
It'd just be worth into the report.
And the accounting part of it, that Sue's got for the water and sewer bill, she should be able to tally that up pretty easily right on a computer, I would imagine.
Talk to Time Bond and we'll go from there and see what Sue can come up with or her.
We voted to do, to do the study.
Well, I amended the motion.
We voted after you amended it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Within the budget.
But, but we didn't, we kinda digressed on the discussion of can we get the Route Nine numbers based on our, you know, bills and invoices? So, maybe that would be something even for next week if it's possible, or for the fifteenth. Okay.
All right.
Sewer impact fee discussion, select board are asked to discuss the appeal of a sewer impact fee change, charge estimate. Complaint has not filled out a sewer connection application. Fees collected under the sewer impact fee program are to be used to improve the functions of the sewer treatment plant and associated systems and equipment. Sewer impact fees were created by act of special legislation, chapter nine of the Acts of two thousand eight. So- Chris and I had a conversation about this, but I'll just say, just based on what we just heard in the last conversation about how broke sewer funds are, I'm not for eliminating or reducing the fees. I'll let you speak to what the other surrounding towns have, but if, I mean, we could work with businesses, but as far as reducing or eliminating them, I think that's gonna put us in a worse situation, so.
Yes. And that, that's also why that law was to, to be able to assist leaders, to be able to resist the reduction, because that's one of the major routes where utilities tend to raise capital revenues. Now, a, a, a customer will come before the board to ask for either, either there's hardship or there are, or there are bigger investments and, and the wait for it is for to give a payment or betterment because of X amount of investment that will be done in the long run, or even if it's a small business who's having hardship. But in the case of this individual that came before the board, our view is that the, the board at this point does not have anything to go by to attend such an issue. The individual came in, as most people do coming, to ask for general information. And we gave information based on the information we supplied. For example, we supplied, we told that this individual, we have anywhere to twenty-five machines. And so, based on the calculation for the impact, we gave a number. Now, the individual has not come to begin the process of either filling the forms, paying what, sometimes payments, or establishing some credit so that he can come before the board. So, that was why we think that there was, there's nothing for the board to walk, as opposed to somebody who feels, why should I pay? Now, he, this individual doesn't have to establish twenty-five machines. It can be ten, it can be five, based on their capital, or, and then at least something to start, and then as they continue, our view is that then if they have run into a situation where they may not be able to meet all the payments of the impact, they can come before the board for leniency or for some arrangements, as opposed to at this point where they are, we don't have a record, official record in this, as it is.
And the, the fee is calculated based on the Title V calculation? So, if you had a septic system, you would have to design a septic system this big for this many gallons per day, or whatever, to accommodate that, that keeps?
So, it should, should be based on, we're, we're talking about, we might as well be out front here, we're talking about a laundromat.
Yes.
So, we're talking about a machine that might not use the amount of water as they used to. So, would it be of the use of how much per large load of water?
It, it doesn't, doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter?
No, it doesn't matter. If, 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 at this point, we can, it becomes an assumption, and we, we don't want to bring to the board an assumption. So, this individual comes in, based on the calculations, he gets X amount to pay. Now, he pays the X amount, he's given access to the water, now the system goes through, and then even if he can't afford to pay all the amount, then we can, we can come to the board, and then they can now lay down to the board their hardship, or the reason why they cannot afford, or some mechanism for the board to use to make a decision. The board may decide, it's okay.
Is there any way to do an abatement on an original infrastructure fee that you have already charged? Anybody know that?
We've set, we've set a precedent, and we've set payment options up for small businesses because of the impact fees that we have in the Title V regulations. And after we had calculated the estimated number of machines, even at the low rate, the Title V regulations are actually lower than the calculations we come out at the lowest flow of those new machines, so.
Good to know. And then my, my fear with this is I don't wanna necessarily have exorbitant sewer impact fees where that scares businesses away, that could be supporting the sewer system.
I know.
And so, we're like scaring people away.
We have, like I said, we have set up payment schedules for small businesses, you know, to keep them here, you know, quarterly or over a five-year period, even if you wanna do that, you know?
In this situation, Chris and I were talking that, we're kinda looking at a moving target here, because since there's been no application filed, there's nothing on paper, we're kinda negotiating with-
Nothing.
Yeah, so, you know, we're asking for, oh, the fee's too high, well, what fee? We haven't decided on a fee yet, you know, we're just throwing out numbers here, and so-
The possibility.
Yeah, we, we've, we've set the precedent of working with people, and I don't have a problem with working with people with payment plans, especially, you know, to attract businesses. But as far as eliminating the fee, I mean, we can't afford it. And we're talking about raising sewer rates, and on the other hand, we're gonna give someone else a break on their sewer rates.
I concur with the DPW director's assessment.
Can I speak to this, please?
Sure.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
So, myself and my husband, Richard Pratt, I'm Sarah Pratt, we're the ones that are looking to open up the laundromat.
Mm-hmm.
We were not made aware that we had to do any kind of application. We've been speaking with people, although we haven't even been contacted by anybody here with the proposed numbers whatsoever. We've heard through the grapevine what it possibly could be, but we've not been contacted. So, therefore, we haven't been able to even move forward. Looking at the Title V, I do see that non-residential facilities with significantly different design flows than those listed above can ask for an appeal. I'm not looking to not pay anything, I just want it to be fair and equitable.
The, the main thing is, the figure we were shot at was a hundred and forty-two thousand. We came back, and I presented the board a few weeks ago, this is what we use. We're trying to make it so we can sustain a business in the town, we can pay the water and sewer. The machines do not use the water, which came up with the calculations. The sewer is actually a lot better because of troughs and the filtration systems they use, gives very little, so it's more or less-
It's not septic, it's gray water, essentially.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I do appreciate what the gentleman is saying, but again, it goes back to what I was saying. If the, the gentleman coming to the board is not the first step.
It's not the first step.
The first step.
The first step is for them to come in and fill the application with the P W. We'll go through the process, then whatever appeal or, or whatever discussions they have in terms of technology has improved on these machines, and then that can be compared to what we have on the ground, our, our fees we've charged. Then the board can now decide either to give a betterment because of the technology, or to make an arrangement to pay the street. But right now, they are coming to the board, they have no sudden, DPW to do the application. So, my, my view-
We, we were asked, we were asked by
My, Mr. Chairman?
The town administrator to come to the select meeting tonight with this discussion.
So, my view is that the board, in my, in my view, DPW doesn't have the good information to present to the board.
I have some, I have some cold hard numbers.
Yeah, can, can, can we just stop this, and can you meet with him, and can you guys work it out and then come to us? Just 'cause this is a little bit, I mean, trying to present it now in front of us, we're not gonna sort it out right now, but I think if you do meet with him-
I guess we were coming here-
And work it out.
To look for some discussion on it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think if you start the process-
Yeah.
And we weren't told that-
We wanna work with you, yeah.
We were never told that there was a process.
Well, then, let's start the process.
Yeah, and we apologize, yeah.
You go to the DPW and fill out the application, and let them know what the machines are, so on and so forth, and fill out what you need to do, and then they can go from there with you and give you a price, and then there could be an appeal process.
Yes. Once we, 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 what we discussed with the town administrator, so the process, then, then at least, the board will have some information to-
Who, who do they go to? Sharon?
No, they go to Mike Peck, why not, I believe, for sewer.
Yes, Mike give them information as we give to people who come into the fire.
Well, we, we want them to fill out an application.
Sure.
And whatever it is.
And we have no problem doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were not told that, we were told to come to the meeting, to speak to you.
So, let's, let's do the process, like, due diligence and start that way.
Yeah, and I apologize for the confusion, but it seems like that's the best step to move forward.
When she was the chairman, a couple of weeks ago, she had called me, and Bob, the property manager, I got into contact with, and he said it was a high and low number, so we just had rough numbers that we were looking at, that's all. So, as long as you get some accurate figures and get it to the water and sewer, then, then you can come back to this meeting again.
We do, we own a laundromat already, and I have, I have water bills from last year that show what are your situations.
That's good.
That's great, yeah.
On favorite machines.
Just, just to be clear, we, we'd love your business to come to Hadley, we just need to make sure that whatever we do makes sense and is fair and equitable, and I think that especially this board here is more than willing to work with you.
And that's all I'm asking, is that it's fair and equitable. And we have no problem paying the fee.
Right. And like we said, we don't always have people pay upfront, sometimes it's paid over a number of years.
Okay.
I think the main thing is, is to-
I think the main thing is, is the process. I think the process has to be spelled out.
Yep.
Because, you know, we've had conversations, you and I, Mr. Nixon, and I said, we're all set for tonight. I think the main thing is, is, if this is Jessica?
Jennifer.
Jennifer, I'm sorry. So, we get the information, who we're going to contact?
I will, I'm going to pull his number up and give it to you right now.
Okay.
So, we know where to start from. And when we come back to the board or to...
After you get your numbers and...
Yeah.
Right. I mean, we just want, it's fair for the town, everybody can move forward, and it's...
And you can move forward.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. We want you here, so let's, let's figure it out.
Well, let's keep your business handling. Because we as DPW, we don't have good information to present to the board. So, it makes us look as if we're inadequate or we're not prepared.
Yeah, and I don't want to put anybody...
It makes us look like we came here to talk to the board, and then you're coming up, it looks like a miscommunication. You know, I've been in, believe me, I've sat on these boards for 32 years, and I still do. Communication is the worst thing for a public official not to have. Because you can't give the right answers. So...
So, I apologize for any inconvenience. It's just that I need to give the board something so I can...
So, we'll start the right process.
All right. And we'll see you outside.
That'll be great.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming tonight.
So, Chris, before we leave this topic though...
Yeah.
Two years ago, we sat down with the building inspector, and, and we talked, we talked about this process issue. And so, Chris, if maybe could politely ask at some point, if you, you know, I'm only saying you because Marlo was the one who did it last time. But we do need to do a better job as a town helping people go through so that they know exactly who they're supposed to meet with and when.
Yes. It's on my, it's on my list to do, things to do after the town meeting.
Perfect.
To talk to the town administrator.
But I think, I think a lot of it resides with Tim's office as well.
Yeah.
So, we would love to have collectively...
He tries to call the permits to the people that are...
Exactly. So, they're not so frustrated.
Yeah. Even if it's a sheet of paper, you can handle...
Anything, just a checklist to go down.
It's a checklist. And also, the planning board is also part of that process too.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Marlo, for bringing that up. Okay. We ready to move on?
Scott's getting the full experience.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What on earth did I just sign up for?
All right, so...
He didn't run out yet, so I guess he's still calling Monday.
Senior Center, Library, and Fire Substation updates. Can start, Jane, you're here. Do you want to start with the Senior Center?
The Senior Center Building Committee would like to present to the select board a change order to change our asphalt roof to a standing seam metal roof. The cost would be an additional $256,841.45 to the contract. Because of the low bid and the reduced size of our building, that still leaves us with a contingency fund of $895,000, which is 19% of the budget, which is huge, way above where we were. And the building committee feels very strongly, this was our original design, and then because of the bylaw existing, we couldn't do it. The bylaw was changed at town meeting in the fall. So, now we can do it, and we have the money to do it. And we would like to have a building that would have the correct roof on it along.
My only question is, was it an add-on? Do you have to go back to the planning board?
We will have to go back to the planning board.
Okay. Yeah. And it is, the metal roof that we have been quoted is the same metal roof that's on this building on Hooker School, if that matters. I believe it's on, is it on the library too? Is it on the library? It's the same metal roof that's on all the buildings in town.
Safety complex.
Safety complex, that's the other one.
And it's only, it's a 20-year paint only.
Subfire station.
It's not warranted against leaks. Boy, is that written in, yeah.
I do not understand that.
Oh, boy.
Were you saying that?
It's on the...
Page three, bottom of page three.
Third page on inspection.
Item seven.
Not a weather tight warranty. Yeah. Can I just make the comment that a metal roof would be fantastic, but this, what's being offered from this manufacturer is a junk warranty. And I don't mean that to, you know, but comparative to what's out there, they're, they're offering 30, 40-year paint warranties and weather tight warranties on, on metal, you know, morton buildings and things like that. So, I feel like there's possibly some better options. I don't know if it would cost anymore, but it would, you know, put the town in a better position.
How did the, the OPM feel about this?
OPM is all for this. And he says that it's the same roof that's existing on the current town building.
But I think David's points about the warranty.
I don't, we didn't talk about that.
I mean, I don't, would like to know what it is on the other buildings, because this is the same roof, the same installer, everything.
It's the same company.
It's the same that's done all the other municipal buildings in town. So, this would basically be the same warranty everywhere.
It should be. And I just don't know why they wrote that in.
I don't either. I don't like that there. I'm not going to sign that one with that there. This is not a weather tight warranty.
My other question is, obviously, we have a large buffer contingency left over because it was so far under budget. But is there a way to wait on moving forward with the roof until at least we get foundations poured and framed? So, that way, if we run into some big stumbling block, that's going to eat up a lot of that, I guess, contingency money we have left over? We can wait a couple of weeks to do that?
They're going to TV that drain line. I guess we got one issue ready. Clay tile pipe in there, no? That they just bumped into?
Yeah, they're, we think, it's still to be determined. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, the question is, how time sensitive is this approval?
Well, I think we have a couple of weeks or...
Yeah. If we can move forward with, you know, get as close to having to order that roof as possible, that way, we know that, yeah, we're feeling pretty good about contingencies and unexpected things.
Can you, can the committee verify this little write-in statement on this page?
I will, I will ask the OPM.
And we can bring it up next meeting.
Yeah, we can bring it up next meeting, yeah.
And does anybody have any, I mean...
No, I have no problem.
Right. I think everybody's in agreement to go.
Was this an add-on?
No, it wasn't. This is a change order.
So, you've got to pay for the change order. There's a cost to the change order when it's not an add-on.
Yes.
That's right. It's a change order.
So, how much for the change order is that going to cost?
I thought that was all in here.
$256,000.
Yeah, that's the cost of the change order.
That's the cost, but there's a cost to the change order. There's another cost figure.
There's a 5%...
A change order that's not an add-on.
Yeah, the, the 5% OHNP, I think that's what you're talking about. That's $12,001.09. And then, the 1% bond is $2,543.
That's included in that number.
That's included, okay. All right. I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
I mean, the metal would be fantastic. That's the better bet. It's made in three, it looks better, so...
As long as it has a warranty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
We'll take that right back to them.
You're going to take that to him? Okay, thank you, Jane.
Take it to the cleaners, Jane.
Okay.
Two other things I had on there that came up today, and that is going to be an issue once the library gets under construction, is parking for the existing Goodwin Memorial Library once these, this construction project is fully underway. We don't, we don't have a solution there right now. I know the municipal building committee is...
Just going to ask if they can...
Working on a plan for a parking lot like we discussed over here. So, that's something that I think is going to be brought to our attention in the next few weeks. I have been talking to the municipal building committee specifically, but I know they were supposed to talk about it last night, but not everybody was there, so they weren't able to talk about it.
I was just going to say, I thought they had last night, yeah.
Yeah. So, so hopefully soon we'll be hearing about that. The thing would be is, how are we going to pay for that? Those alterations?
The other issue is, D1 vodka is now landlocked, so...
Right. Yep. Yep, we need to wrap him into that conversation.
And I just seen a wholesale sign up on the next property over next door.
I can't try buy it, $500,000.
You got that contingency, yeah.
Yeah. And then, one other thing I have is, there are some unsuitable soils we have over there that are not loam, and are soil that can't be used for fill or anything on site. Plan right now is to, you know, dispose of that soil, not take it to the DPW. And I just want to make that transparent to everyone, that there is soil there that we are going to haul offsite because it's not the Hadley loam. It's, it's just soil that's not suitable for construction or topsoil.
What about the loam though?
The loam is going to be either used on site or go to the DPW.
The excess will be brought over to the town DPW.
Yeah. But, but this unclassified soil, it's really not worth keeping.
We are going to obviously have some loam. And Hopkins Baseball Leagues teams use the Young Men's Club field. And we've, I've been approached, and I think you have too, about a couple of loads of the loam going over to the Young Men's Club to fix the baseball fields for the kids at Hopkins.
You guys just say where you want it to go. I don't know who's trucking it. I don't know if the contractor's trucking it or the town's trucking it. That's, but it's, the town owns it, but it's not being used on site.
There's a contractor.
Yeah. Yeah, we should probably have a discussion about that before it happens.
Yeah, we could talk about that at a later date.
No.
Sooner rather than later.
They're, they're using the fields now. They need to fix them all, so...
I mean, we're, okay, yeah.
I mean, it's only two loads. It's not half the pile.
Chris, is that something that we could handle?
Yeah, we can handle that. Even though, even though, both we have a garage.
Okay. But I think that loam needs to stay on site until that, the plan, I believe, was it's going to stay on site over there until they're done with all the site work.
But we have some.
So, what you're talking about is taking two loads from the highway garage.
Oh, from the current highway garage, okay.
Bring it over to the Young Men's Club for the kids, baseball and softball teams.
Yeah. Otherwise, I wouldn't be able to do that.
All right. I'll make a motion that we bring two loads of loam to the Hadley Young Men's Club for the baseball fields.
Second.
Yeah. I'll pull out the telephone pole so you can, don't go around. You can go by the home base on the first ball field and just pile there and take care of it.
So, we're just going to dump it? We're not going to spread it or anything? You're going to take care of the...
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay, great, okay.
Too loose.
Thank you for clarifying that. Because that's where I was getting worried. Okay. All, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstream.
Okay. Anything else on the Senior Center, Jane?
They're pouring foundations into this week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Library?
Library, really no update until, so we're out to bid. And it'll be the end of May when the bid documents are due back. And so, next big update from us will be first week of June, probably. We are meeting to go over some design information and the like. I think, actually, I think it's on the 15th, so I won't be there. I'll be here, but that's when the next meeting is.
Okay. Okay, and Fire Substation?
Subfire Station, we have put out to bid. It was advertised, so the bid documents are out. And we're just waiting to have them see what comes in. We're on the move.
And that's mid-June, right?
Mid-June. It's, it's coming along because we've already put the bids out. Within the next couple of weeks, we should get the bids and the openings. We should know by middle of June also.
Busy, busy, busy.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We have another meeting in June before that.
Okay, that's that.
I'm actually have to bring something back for our meeting at that first, that June 12 meeting, I think it is. I'll have something for us to sign from the Subfire Station.
Okay. And our last thing here on the agenda, I believe, is the adult-use marijuana request for qualifications document. And this is the RFQ we reviewed last week and should be, or, I don't know if it was last week, but a couple of weeks ago.
April 10th.
And it's ready to go out.
You asked me to run it past the chief of police. He and I met, we've reviewed it. He had, he supports the RFQ process because it will most likely more than not result in a better quality vendor of adult-use marijuana. It would be better interest of the town would be served with the RFQ process. So, I'm bringing it back, asking for permission to release it on Friday after the town meeting vote. We'll know how that bylaw goes. And I had suggested a six-week turnaround. I've gotten some feedback that that may be too long. So, perhaps we would consider a four-week turnaround.
I'd like to support it. I mean, we want adequate time for appropriate and thoughtful responses, but four weeks seems to be plenty of time.
Yeah, three or four weeks, because if someone's doing this as a professional, they should basically have their back every day.
Exactly. Right.
So, we'd send it out on the third? Should we say, one, two, three, four, be May 31st deadline? Would be a Friday? Or do you want to make it a Monday, June 3rd deadline?
Friday.
Friday deadline?
Yeah.
Friday, the 31st.
31st? That's not a holiday, right?
Jennifer, would you be able to be here for that?
Is it Friday?
It's a Friday.
Friday, after Memorial Day?
Yes.
Yes, I'll be here. I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Okay, so it's four full weeks we're going with?
Yeah, that would be...
Not three, four?
That'd be four. Does that sound good? I thought you guys said four.
Yeah, I just thought it should be shorter than six.
Okay. Four's fine. We can do it three.
I mean, the 24th is right before a holiday weekend, so I don't know.
Four it is, though. Do we need to make a motion to release this RFQ?
Yeah, I don't, but you made it.
Second with the revised shortened deadline.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One thing we didn't touch on was the town administrator report.
Soonly, we have a town meeting coming up tomorrow.
Oh, is that tomorrow?
Wait.
I've got plans.
David, thank you for your report.
Yeah, yeah, that's basically...
I have a suggestion.
What's that?
When the sign gets put out and it says ATM, you think bank. You don't think it's a town meeting. And I think it should be spelled out in the future.
Yeah.
Good suggestion.
We're going to take it to the bank.
My response to the people that called me was, we're taking all the ATMs out of the banks. We're only putting them in municipal buildings.
All right. So, the updates, just touching on things that we haven't already talked about, the unit directional flushing is underway. Annual town meeting, we have that coming up. Everybody is encouraged to show up and vote. IT upgrade, we now have a May 13th appointment with Acuity Technologies. And they're going to go over their preliminary results of their assessment of our IT system for town hall and DPW. This is a free program provided by the state, and it's a prerequisite for applying for the next round of IT grants under the Community Compact Program. So, we're in good shape for that. Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant, that's been submitted. And we're hopeful that we'll get planning money that will lead to capital money on that. We were contacted by the State Flood Plane Manager of the Commonwealth to visit Hadley to help with compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. This is the revision of the flood insurance maps that we've been talking about over the months. We were setting up a meeting in May or June, depending upon people's availability. We want building, planning, emergency management, myself, DPW to be at this meeting. And this is a requirement for keeping up to date on the National Flood Insurance Program. Bay Road Bridge replacement, we had a meeting with the Mass DOT. They expect this to be advertised for bid in 2021. And the construction will take two years after that. We have a bid opening date for the municipal electricity aggregation project, and that bid opening is May 22nd. So, that project is moving forward. Audit is substantially complete. The IT grant for the collectors program is going along. We ran into a couple, and it delays because of the quality of data supplied by one of the software vendors. We've corrected that, and now we should have that project up and going for May 2019. And then, we have annual town meeting tomorrow. May 18th, a strawberry and asparagus supper next door. June 1st would be the asparagus festival, and these people need to come in front of the select board.
Okay.
Hopefully, we have some asparagus, huh?
Some out there.
When you say they need to come in front of the select board, because we have, that was a follow-up.
Asparagus festival?
Follow-up, follow-up on our, on the festival.
It's a follow-up to make sure that they have received all of their license and have communicated with everybody else.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Carrie's two dates. Do you want to announce them?
Do you have them?
Yep.
Yeah, go for it.
I can pull them up. It'll be May 24th, 9:30 to 11:30 at Hadley Town Hall, this room here, 203.
What's that?
Dan Kerry.
Dan Kerry will be...
Representative Kerry will be here.
He will also be at Hadley Council on Aging, May 31st, from 1:00 to 2:30 in the afternoon. That's at Most Holy Redeemer.
Any other announcements?
Do we need to say anything to the board about the groundbreaking ceremony? And do they need to do anything formal about that?
Oh, yeah, we should announce that. Yeah, the groundbreaking ceremony for the Senior Center.
I believe you folks are inviting people. It's not the building committee, I think it's the select board that does that.
I think, I think that's right, from a protocol standpoint, yeah.
Okay, so the building committee would like you to invite people for the 4th of June, which is Tuesday at 1:00, June 4th.
June 4th, 1:00.
And I know that some of the people, like the big name dignitaries like Governor, need about a month's advance notice.
Governor, Lieutenant Governor, and our reps.
All of that. Eight reps.
I have to take my lunchtime.
Can do it on time.
So it's June 4th at 1:00 PM.
1:00 PM.
And it's a Tuesday.
That is a Tuesday.
It's your card, Habs.
I don't think I'm going to be here. I'll be here, yeah.
I think I can be here.
I'm here, I'll get time.
I'll be here.
And they're stopping construction that day.
Okay, if that is it, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, see you tomorrow night at town meeting. 7:00.
7:00.
6:00 here, though?
6:00 here, yeah. All those in favor?
Oh, one, one last thing.
Oh, wait, 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 sorry, take that back, roll that back. Do we have to reopen?
Oh, right, 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 right.
V1 Vodka, lay it on us.
There was, something came up within our 48-hour window, I'm bringing it to you. V1 Vodka made a mistake on their dates. They wanted to have an event on, for the Kentucky Derby. He wrote down May 11th, he wanted it on May 4th. When it was brought to my attention that he had made the mistake, I reached out to him. He was here this morning when I was here, he filled out the application, he apologized. I've had the police department and the fire department and the building inspector all approve it. I have explained to him that since he applied for the May 11th and the May 11th has been issued, that we will not be canceling that, that is still out there. But he is looking to have an event on May 4th. There has been some concerns raised about the parking. I will say that I addressed them with Paul, and Paul said that he was reaching out to the American Legion to make sure that the parking would be available at the American Legion as he has said on the other four that he recently brought forth to y'all. And I was just looking to see what y'all...
Okay, so we have May 4th, an event at V1 Vodka. Can, can we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to allow him to...
Adjust his date?
Apply for a new license or make for it.
Well, apply for it, we're approving it.
It needs to be a new license, not...
Apply and approve.
Yeah.
With authorization for Parking Act?
The Legion.
The Legion.
I'll second that for just a quick discussion.
Okay.
Just a request, it's been a while since, it was a few years back when we made the arrangements when Paul bought the building, on how we were going to navigate, you know, any possible conflicts and the like. And a lot has changed, given the fact that the construction is there, and there have been some ongoing communication problems. So maybe it would be helpful if we kind of reconvened, had representatives from the library and asked Paul to come in and just cover like how things are going to be working, where parking's going to happen when he has these events and the like. Could we do that?
Yeah.
I can invite him in for maybe a meeting, a first meeting in June? Is that too long, or is that sound good?
I guess so. I mean, whatever the pleasure of the...
Let's just reiterate when our next meeting is after tonight, please? We didn't settle that either?
Oh, I thought we...
It is the 15th?
Tomorrow night.
No, not tomorrow night yet. But I'm talking about a board meeting.
Oh, it's not the 8th?
The young little whippersnapper over there.
Sounds like there's two public hearings for May 8th.
Yeah, I have the 8th and the 15th on.
I think we're doing three in one month, what's that about?
I have...
Well, I mean, I think...
What was, why?
Because we have...
We're done with town meeting.
Yes, because we have town meeting in May, and basically, you know, we always have booked this Wednesday meeting. Sometimes we haven't had to meet, but tonight we had a whole bunch of things to do, and then we kind of roll into the normal.
I'd rather meet an hour than three hours once a week. I really would, I made that statement a couple of times already.
You made a lot of statements.
No, you ignore me usually anyway, so...
I've sent out, I apologize if I misunderstood something, but I've sent out notifications to a butters for Eversource and for an additional public hearing. I've already mailed the letters out. I don't know, is it okay to, I don't know how I would change that.
We meet at the pleasure of the board, so if we have to meet on the 15th, we're just going to notify everybody that a public hearing's been deferred.
I think we should be more explicit, usually after town meeting, it's just twice a month and not three times a month, but whatever.
Okay.
And I think that we had...
Every other month we only have two. I think it was just this one time, because we're trying to get caught up.
Okay.
And we may have to put in more meetings too when we're starting the projects too, so we did mention that also already.
So 8th and 15th are confirmed?
8th and the 15th, I have on my calendar right now.
You love this place, just once a week. We have so much fun together.
Can't get enough of it.
It's the camaraderie, John.
All right, so we're on, we're on for the 8th?
We're on for the 8th.
We're on for the 8th, okay.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
It's a question? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.